Very good.
All right, let's call the meeting to order a bit late, 7:10, but we'll go ahead and get started. And we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, please, if you'll just join me. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Flag. United States of America.
And to three public.
For which it stands.
Which it stands. One nation.
God. Divisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
I hope you didn't start the recording on that, John, because that.
Yeah, it's, we've been recording ever since, but I'll edit most of this out.
Yeah.
Before the meeting.
I think we're gonna have to start having choir.
Verse on the pledge, but we did.
Yeah, I think we did. Roll call, please, Diane.
Ken Anderson. He's on mute.
Ken, you're muted.
Ken Anderson.
I'm not muted.
There he is.
Here you now.
Sue Fylek.
Sue's frozen.
She froze.
Still doing the pledge.
Bill Graberek.
I think he's absent.
Chris Mondi.
Here.
Pat Schuberg.
Here.
Matt Wilson.
Here.
Jeff Walter.
Here. All right, under public comment, we had one public comment submitted. I am going to go ahead and read it. And we'll have a little quick discussion before we answer any of the public comment for tonight. So the question came in, and I'll read the whole email so everybody can get the gist of it. First of all, it says, I'd like to make the following comment and ask the following questions during the April 20 Village Development Board meeting. And this is from Judy Childress. Thank you all, thank you to, thank you to all the businesses and community members that participated in the Give Back to Pat Hill benefits carryout fundraiser on Saturday. Pat is a pillar of the community. And I'm greatly encouraged to see so many businesses and people willing to support her during this difficult time. Thanks to everyone who contributed to this cause. I would also like to thank the Village of Elburn for the ability to attend meetings virtually as well as ask questions of the board and staff through email. With that in mind, and these are two questions that were submitted. Has there been any contact with Village of Elburn staff and Crown? If so, what was the content of the communication? And the second question is, has there been any contact with Village of Elburn Board members and Crown? If so, what was the content of the communication? Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. And before our village attorney jumps in to remind me that we don't have to take questions, we don't have to take questions. But my thought is that in the, in the, you know, keeping things open and out front, we could go ahead and answer this question unless advised otherwise by our village attorney or village administrator. Only because we'll just be saving somebody the headache of having to do a FOIA request and typing up all the answers and the paperwork and everything that goes along with the FOIA. So, Bill, John, if you want to pipe in before we go around the room and answer those questions? Or what do you guys think?
I don't mind answering because it's been the same story for, for months and months. Staff has not had any communication with Crown Development. They have sent emails, they have left voicemails, and none of them have been returned because our stance has been that we're not dealing with Crown until they're done with Sugar Grove. And as of today, they are still not done with Sugar Grove.
I guess then that answers, Bill, we don't need any input on answering that question since we just did. I have not received any communications either. And I'll just go down through the board as I see you on the screen for a yea or a nay. Matt, have you heard anything from Crown?
Nay.
Pat?
Nay.
Chris?
Nay.
And Mr. George Bailey?
Nay.
All right, that's everyone, right? Bill's not here, so, okay. So I don't know how we're.
And Sue is not on yet.
Oh, Sue's not back yet. Yeah, what happened?
No.
That's right.
Well, I think her screen froze, and so she had to relog in probably.
Okay. All right, we'll get back to her on that one when she comes back on, but I don't know, John, are you answering back on that email? Or, because I don't see her on the call.
No, I don't see her on the call either. You know, it is a public comment, we can, we can answer it or we can't. Or, you know, we don't have to, we're not obligated to answer back. I don't mind telling her, you know, what the story is because it's been the same story for months and months. I mean, it's been almost a year. I think the last time I talked to Marv Bailey from Crown was in May of last year.
Yeah, again, it's just, we're trying to save the FOIA time, right? Because they, they could FOIA, then you got to do all the paperwork. And, you know, then it's just a, you know, more work on staff, so. Okay. Let me get rid of this call. It's not Bill. All right, so that, I have no awards and presentations tonight. So is there any other public comment? The only other public out there is Mr. Adaman. And I don't hear from him.
No comment here, I'm good.
Thank you, sir. On the omnibus agenda, I need a motion to approve the village board minutes from April 6th of 2020.
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Schuberg, second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Mondi. Roll call vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Fylek is not here yet. Bill Graberek is not here. Chris Mondi.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under mayor, I've got a couple of things tonight. First, I'm going to read a proclamation. As soon as I get to it on my other screen here, scrolling, 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 there it is. It's a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas 2020 is the 148th anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Walter, President of the Village of Elburn, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 25th, 2020, as the 21st anniversary of Arbor Day in the Village of Elburn. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden their heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Bill Van Bogart, signed by me, this 25th day of April, 2020. Plant trees, Bill, plant some trees. A couple of other things I had. Last board meeting, I talked about raise funds to spend in town and then turn around and give those gift cards from our local restaurants and establishments back out to citizens in the Elburn community that are in need because of the virus and losing their jobs or what have you. So I reached out to both the Chamber and to the Lions Club, and the Lions have agreed to take this on as a project. So we are working with First Midwest Bank on a way to provide the second part of this. So what happens once the money comes in, how do we get it back out? What we've come up with is we'll probably be using a debit card from First Midwest Bank that will be only able to be spent, I think, within our zip code and only at certain stores. So we're not going to give somebody a gift card so they can go to Elburn Liquors and stock up on beer. It's really for people in need. And rather than going to each establishment and trying to get something set up, we ran through a gyration of ideas, including Elburn dollars that we would try to get all the businesses to sign up for, take the money by Elburn dollars, hand those out. They could take them to local businesses. Then we were worried about, you know, fraud, whether somebody went home on their copy machine and printed a bunch of these out. So we kind of went round and round on a bunch of different ideas, and that's kind of where we landed at the moment. So we're waiting for some, some word from First Midwest. And then I think by the end of the week, we should see the GoFundMe page. And then we'll start collecting money. And Julie has generously contacted me and offered to make a $20,000 donation. Thanks, Julie, who just fell off her chair at that dollar amount. But she did offer to make a donation, so thank you, Julie, as has the Chamber, who has, did not want to be involved in running this. They're happy with a donation. And then we'll see where it goes from there, but, so look to that to happen this week. I think we're finally getting somewhere with the Lions Club. You know, just a lot of things we want to make sure are right before we do this, so hopefully by the end of the week, you'll see that up. We plan to do the distribution through local churches and social organizations like the Elburn Food Pantry, since they probably better know who's in need than, you know, us taking a bunch of emails at the Lions Club and giving it out. So if any of you have resources through your church or your community service or outreach that would know who could use the aid, just send me an email, and we'll get them on our list to contact. Dory, from, formerly from the Chamber, but from the Lions Club is contacting folks. And she's kind of getting that list together of who needs the help. And then we'll start to distribute once we see what kind of money starts coming in. Also, I got an email this week from a young lady who grew up here in Elburn by the last name of Such. She is now in Detroit as a nurse, working in a COVID-19 unit in a Detroit hospital. Because she's involved with the virus, she sent her son back here to live with her grandparents. Her son's birthday is coming up on a week from today, actually. And she asked me if there's anything we could do. So I reached out to my connections in town. So we've got fire chief, I think, is going to support this as well from the police side. We've got Chris Hansen from Duquesne Abate is bringing a whole bunch of Harleys. Dory's being, bringing some big cherry picker truck that she has access to. John put it out to the Legion, and Harley's coming five times, John. Did I see emails that said Harley was coming?
Yes.
But, so the Legion is bringing folks out as well as family. So we're going to do that Sunday rather than Monday, the day before the birthday, only because they don't want to interfere with people's normal workdays. So if you're available and want to do something different on Sunday, at about 1:45, we'll be pulling out of the Jon Stewart parking lot at 2:00. The grandparents live on Highland. It's the Suches, S-U-C-H-S. Many of you may know them. So that's who the grandson is. We'll be driving by with whoever shows up on Sunday. So much appreciated to everyone for the support there. I'm sure the young man, he's going to be five. I understand he has a great interest in police and fire trucks and thinks motorcycles are pretty cool, too, so it should be a pretty good day for him. That's all I have. Under mayor, village attorney, Bill?
Just an update as to the Anderson Road extension. So, you know, we're, we're in possession of all the conveyance documents. We've got the two orders vesting title from the court case. And then through the homeowners association, we've got the warranty deed and the grant of permanent easement. IDOT requires a whole boatload of other documents that go along with the conveyance documents as well. They, they were submitted, they're being revised as we, as we speak. Their next deadline, so they're in their possession now, so we've met that deadline. They need to be polished up and then submitted to their IDOT, the State Central Office on April 29th. And that would be the paperwork deadlines to meet the next letting date. So everything's, everything's on schedule right now paperwork-wise to meet the next letting date.
Okay, so that's the June date we talked about last, last meeting?
Oh, that's correct.
All right. And Phil, it sounded like you think we're going to be in construction for a good part of, better part of a year. Phil, we can't hear you, so I don't know if your microphone is muted. I don't see it muted, but. Phil? Can't hear you.
Julie, do you have a comment?
I know, other than Phase 1 was approved. And we got all the revised engineering sheets for Phase 2 submitted per the deadline. And then schedule-wise, really depends on who the low bidder is and what their schedule looks like. So, I mean, there's still a very good chance you can get this built this year, I think.
Okay. Sounds good. Julie, I tried to unmute you, but I don't have the power, apparently. I did mute John, though, while he was on the phone. Was that Bill calling in?
Yeah, he's having technical difficulties.
All right, anybody heard from Sue?
Yes, Sue texted me, she's trying to get in. She got kicked out and can't get back into the Zoom room. Her, she is on Wi-Fi, but her internet's acting up. I suggested that she use the number and the invite to call in. I wonder if Bill could do the same thing.
I think Phil just fell over. All right, he's dialing in. All right, anything else there, village attorney?
Nothing further.
Thank you, sir. John, admin?
I don't have anything at the moment. You know, it's, we're, we're getting stuff accomplished, not, not everything. Entry and telephone calls, emails, trying to take care of all the, you know, the basic business at, at Village Hall. Joanne and Katie and Tom are doing a good job of, you know, taking the stuff from the, whether it's the mail or dropping off permits on the vestibule and taking those in, you know, keeping their distance. But, you know, we're, we're keeping it together and, you know, I, I've just got, you know, high praise for everybody who's, you know, having to deal with having their workday disrupted and keeping this going, so I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir. Tom, building and zoning?
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yeah.
Okay. First quarter report. It's never that interesting because it's always a slower time in the construction business, but you've got the numbers in front of you. You can see where they stack up against the previous now 12 years. I've been tracking these. I can tell you that we've hit the 11 single-family home mark for the first three months versus eight from last year. So, you know, we're trending a little up on that. If you have any questions on the numbers you see, you can certainly ask me.
So same question as always, Tom, you ready for the summer?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm ready for this whole pandemic to be over so we can all resume our air quotes, "lives", but, you know, this is a challenge and, you know, we're all doing what we can to, to meet the challenge.
All right, any questions for Doug? And I should back up. Did anybody have any questions for John I didn't ask? No, all right, we'll move on then to Doug, Finance Department. That lovely memo.
The, you have a memo in your packet, and I'll, I'll be referring to that memo as we go through this. And the memo addresses the financial concerns that we may be experiencing due to the pandemic. So I've, I've got several comments that lead into that, so. First of all, I want to thank the village president and the trustees and administrator and all the department heads and all of our coworkers for helping the village run efficiently during these difficult times. So work schedules have been adjusted. And how and where we perform our jobs has changed. And how we interact with our coworkers has been altered. And so the goals of this presentation are, there are four. First, we want to understand the COVID-19 pandemic's effect on the economy. We want to understand what we do not know. We want to understand the potential revenue impact on the Village of Elburn due to the pandemic. And then we want to begin a discussion of a Village of Elburn Financial Response Plan. So the effect on the economy is, the total effect has not yet been determined, but the Federal Reserve has cut its target rate to nearly zero after multiple emergency rate cuts. And so the, and the Fed has announced and is providing $2.3 trillion, trillion with a T, in loans to support the economy. We've already experienced that the interest on the village's investments has gone to zero or nearly zero. The Department of Labor reports that the seasonally adjusted unemployment rate for the week ending April 4th was 8.2%. That's an increase up from 3.1% from the previous week's rate. So in a week, it went from 3.1 to 8.2. And this marks the highest level of the seasonally adjusted unemployment rate in the history of that measurement. So, so that's a significant event. And then the first quarter GDP will be released this month. The gross domestic product measures the productivity, manufacturing productivity in the country. And it's a pretty reliable measure of how the economy is performing. And it's commonly understood among the financial experts that the first quarter GDP will be the worst quarter since the Great Recession of 2007 to 2009. So the outlook is not, not, not good at all, so. And we all know that restaurants and, and many other businesses, hairdressers and barbers included, have either been shut down or they have very few customers. And then when the shelter in place directive ends, the questions are, when will those newly unemployed persons be rehired? And when will people return to the roads? And so that they're buying gas and, and keeping their cars in running order. And when will people resume discretionary spending or meeting in groups such as going to restaurants? And so there, there, a lot of folks think that even after the stay-at-home is lifted, people aren't necessarily going to flock outside and, and start meeting in groups and going to restaurants immediately with a big surge. So that, that's an unknown, so. To use a phrase popularized by Secretary of Defense Donald Rumsfeld in 2002, there are many unknowns and most, there are many known unknowns. And probably some unknown unknowns. So it's, it's kind of a nebulous situation we're in because we don't necessarily know all the answers to what's, what's going to progress here. What we do know is that there will be a financial impact on the state of Illinois' finances and by default, on the Village of Elburn's finances. What we don't know is how deep will the impact be and how long will it last? So the Institute of Government and Public Affairs is a group at the University of Illinois, and they formed a task force on the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. So a group of 27 experts on government finance created a report that is a very good report entitled, "What Policymakers Should Know About the Fiscal Impact of COVID-19 on Illinois." So in this group, in this report, this group was quick to point out that there are a lot of unknowns, which made it very difficult for them to reach their conclusions. However, they did offer some scenarios based on the depth and breadth of the pandemic. How much will the economy decline and how fast will it recover? And these scenarios are illustrated in the table on page one of my memo. So in your packet, if you find my memo, on page one there is a table. Those are the different scenarios that they came up with. So in, in what I'm going to discuss tonight, you'll see the, the one scenario is called Moderate Severity Pandemic. It's, it's the one in the middle there. And if there is a short downturn in the economy followed by a strong and fast recovery, then that's the next, that's the next column over. The, the state of Illinois is looking at about an $8.6, $8.7 billion reduction in revenue. What that will translate to the Village of Elburn is a 22% revenue reduction. On the other hand, if it's a protracted downturn, lasts a long time, and it's a weak recovery, takes a long time to recover from it. It's going to, the state of Illinois is going to be looking to lose between $17 and $18 billion. What that translates to for the Village of Elburn is a 44% reduction in our revenue. So in either case, we're, we're looking at revenue reductions here. So call that Scenario A and Scenario B. So in Scenario A, with a 22% reduction, we're looking at $974,000 and change reduction in revenue. On the other hand, if it's the longer recovery time and a deeper, a deeper downturn in the economy and a 44% reduction in revenue, we're looking at just under $2 million over multiple fiscal years. So we're, in either, either scenario, we're, we're looking at pretty significant decrease in revenue. So there will be an impact on the village's finances. What we don't know is how much and for how long. So if you would look at Appendix A to the memo. So Appendix A is, is, is the first scenario. That's the moderate pandemic with a short downturn followed by a strong and fast recovery. So that's, in a sense, that's the best, the best of all possible cases because we know that we're gonna, we're gonna get hit. So what I've done then is taken that revenue reduction, and I've divided it between the funds that are going to be affected. So the general fund, and I'm not going to go over this line by line. You, I, I would invite you to please study it at your leisure, and please contact me if you have questions. But our revenues are spread out between funds, and I've tried to show you what the effect will be month by month for the first six months of the new fiscal year. Sales tax, for instance, normally that'd be a million and 35,000, $1,035,000. With a 22% reduction means we're going to get 78% of what we budgeted. So that goes down to $807,300. And same thing with utility tax for the electricity. $182,000 goes down to $152,880. Now, that's an 84%. When in the 22% reduction example, not everything will go down 22%, but the, the primary revenue, sales tax is one of them, and will go down the 22%. So the, the others are adjusted accordingly. And so please take a look at that, and like I said, these are. And like I said, these are, these are projections. Page two of appendix A then looks at the general capital fund revenues. So that includes non-home rule sales tax and income tax. And so the total there, $968,000 then goes to $749,000. Recreation fund will be hit, that's at the bottom half of page two. And then go to page three, motor fuel tax. Motor fuel tax is based on what the economy is doing and how much gas are people are driving and how much, how much driving are they doing? So it's projected that motor fuel tax will take a pretty big hit. So that's a 22% hit on that. Takes us from 142,000 to 110,000. And for the, what they call the renewal part of the motor fuel tax, 97,000 to 75,000. So all in all, for motor fuel tax, the reduction would be $52,000. And then for all the funds there listed, the difference from budget is $974,000. That's, that's a pretty good chunk of money. So that's the first scenario. So let's look at scenario B or appendix B. This is the 44% reduction. I'm on page one of appendix B. So this is the 44% reduction. And likewise, I did the same split out between the funds. And the general fund is on page one. General capital is on page two, recreation's page two. Page three is motor fuel tax. And then for all funds, the, the total difference, the total reduction from, from budget is $1,969,909, which is a bigger chunk of money. These are scenarios. Do we know that one or the other of these is going to be the final picture? No, there are lots and lots of unknowns, very many unknowns. And that's what the, that's what everybody, all the commentators on this are saying. Right now there's too many unknowns. We can't put a firm number on what we're going to be looking at. But what we do know is there will be an impact on the village's finances. And what we don't know is how much and for how long. So we, we have addressed the first three of the four goals of this discussion. So we've starting to understand the pandemic's effect on the economy. That was the one goal. The other goal is to understand what we don't know. So we do have a better handle on what we don't know, which is always a good thing. And we do have a, a bit of a handle on the potential revenue impact on the village of Elburn. That's the three out of the four goals. The fourth goal now is we need to begin a discussion of the village of Elburn's Financial Response Plan to the pandemic. And, and this is an exceedingly important thing to do and it will shape many of our decisions as a village going forward. I mean, this is not something we're going to plan and have the discussion tonight. This is, my suggestion is to put a group together or maybe you want to do it as a committee of the whole and that would be good too. But we need to put a group together to, to really study this and get all the nuts and bolts out on the table here about here's what we think is going to be the issue and here's how we're going to deal with it.
I think that's a good committee of the whole discussion. As much as I don't want to wait two weeks. I think some preliminary work done from your perspective. I know the department heads are already putting a list together of projects that could be pushed or canceled for the year. So let's, let's do that at the next committee of the whole, John, whether it's in person or on Zoom, that'll be a working meeting. And then in the meantime, if anybody's got thoughts on what we're seeing. I, I do agree with Doug. I think we need to be proactive and, and what our response will be. And you know, if we have to respond, at least we plan for it. We're not just caught blind. You know, we, we didn't know the recession of 2008 was coming and we, we were very reactive those first four years and just cut, 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 cut. Maybe with a little planning, we can be a little less like a bull in a china shop and we have to start cutting if we've done some planning ahead of time. At least that's my opinion.
I will, I will get a, get something put together for the cow for the next, for the next committee of the whole and we'll go from there.
Yeah, let's at least try to have enough projects on the table to hit that first number.
I'll, the department heads and I'll be talking about that in, in length, I'm sure.
And welcome back, trustee Philek.
Gorberek is here.
Oh, there's trustee Gorberek as well.
Yeah. And you're not going to see my aging face, so.
Well, did, did you wear a tie today?
No, but no, I wore a sweater, but I, and I have pants on too.
Glad to hear that, Bill.
Good to know.
We were going to take a poll at the end of the meeting to see y'all had shorts and sweats on instead of regular pants. All right, so then I'm just going to jump back Doug before you go on to trustee Philek and trustee Gorberek during the public comment. We had a question from the public on whether anyone's been contacted by Crown. We agreed to answer that question even though we don't normally answer questions. So I'll ask trustee Philek, have you been contacted by Crown?
I have not.
Trustee Gorberek?
No, no, of course, there was, Sean Michael, that was a month ago. He, he had talked about Crown, you know. But he, he was kind of vague, you know, like they're probably going to talk to you.
Yeah, and they have not contacted anyone so far. So that's where it stands at the moment then. And then there's your answer, John, for the public comment. All right, Doug, you said we hit three of four things. So let's get on to number four then.
Well, the fourth is to come up with, with a response plan. And that's, that's what we're going to take up at the, the next committee of the whole.
Okay, I thought four was going to be the review of the balance statement, but I guess we were supposed to do that on our own, right?
Oh, well, we can talk about that. John asked me to do a projection of the, what, what I thought the cash balance would be at the end of the fiscal year in the general fund. And that's, that's included in your packet.
Yeah, can you give me the reason behind the comptroller not releasing sales tax? What's their story on that? I haven't read much on that one.
The, don't get me started on the comptroller.
Oh, I, I'm trying to get myself started here.
Well, the, let me go back to my notes here. Because the filing date for income tax has been delayed by three months, the comptroller said, you guys are going to get some of your money late. The, the local portion of the income tax is you're going to get it later than what you normally get it. And then in her memo, it was a little, a little unclear, but it almost felt like she was saying, because my office is so busy working on COVID-19 stuff, some of your other payments are going to be late. Even though we will have received them on time, we will not have the personnel to process them on time to get them out to you when we normally get them out to you. And now that's my interpretation. She, she didn't say it exactly in those words, but that's my interpretation. So we'll, we'll have to see what happens there.
Okay, I urge you all to contact your state representative and make it known that we have a village to run. And because the comptroller can't do her job, it's not our problem that they can't get their distributions out. I mean, that's just, to me, utter nonsense. And I'm happy to give all of you Keith Wheeler's personal cell number.
Now, now just, just keep in mind that that's my interpretation of her letter. In fact, I, I could send, send you all a copy of her letter. In fact, maybe I better do that before you call the comptroller's office.
Doug, your, your interpretation's not that far off. You're, you're right there.
Yeah, but if you could send that letter out, Doug, that'd be great. I'd like to, I like to have the ammunition in my gun belt before I start shooting.
All right, I will do that. Then another item everybody should be aware of is that the Kane County Board has delayed the due date for the first installment of property taxes. Which if, if you're a person paying property taxes in Kane County, and that's a good thing. But if you're a local government entity that will be receiving a share of those property taxes, that's not a good thing because there again, it's not that we're not going to receive the money. It's just going to be late. It, it's kind of the same thing the comptroller is doing. The, we're not, we'll get the money, but we're not going to get it when we normally should get it. And you know, cash, cash flow is always an important consideration. So you, you, you plan on receiving certain revenues at certain times of the year. And if you don't get them then, it causes cash flow issues.
Right.
I was, I was, I was, I'd like to make a question here because today I received the Kane County Connects email that came out this morning that talked about how property tax bills will be in the mail May 1st. First installment is due June 1st. And did any of you, did anyone else read this today?
No, Pat.
Because one, one of the things it says is that, and I was, I was kind of confused Doug because I thought that it was going to be pushed out. But this little article in the email says that first installment is due before June 1st, second installment September 1st. But for those adversely affected by COVID, late penalty fees for first installment payments made on or before July 1st will be waived.
And that's, so that's.
You have 30 days.
You have 30 days. And so, so they really didn't push the due date out, but they have waived the penalty if you're late. So in effect, there, there, there is no, there is no penalty for paying late.
It's a way to prompt people to pay now.
Yeah, but they also say if you are adversely affected, how are they going to know if you're adversely affected or not? There isn't anything in the email that says, you know, I, you know, I, I could just choose not to pay my property tax right away. But I, I guess I was just confused by that.
I'm looking at Rickert's website and his release on this and it just says it's waived. No penalty for the, till July 1st. So you get a free month, two months, yeah, free month.
So they didn't, they didn't officially extend the due date, but what they did was they waived the penalty for a month. Which in fact is, which in effect is the same as extending the due date. Because you won't be logged as paying late, you won't be charged as paying late. So, so that means people are going to hold on to it as, as long as they can or I, I would anyway, which means that the villages and the cities and the townships and the, and the school districts will be receiving their money later than what they had planned.
And Pat, one of the other things that I had read earlier was that if your bank pays your property taxes, you get them paid out through, you know, with your mortgage throughout the year, you're still going to pay it by the due date, by the original due date.
Right, exactly.
You know, in person by check on that day.
Right.
So it's, it's not a blanket 30 days for every property taxpayer in the county.
That's what I was reading.
Yep. All right, anything else, Doug?
Nope, that's all I have.
I think your plate is getting pretty full here all of a sudden.
Yes, it is.
Anything for Doug?
No, should we start playing Lotto tickets or something, you know, and yeah.
Apparently that is an essential thing that can stay open and is buying lottery tickets. So please do. I can't get a haircut, but I can go buy a lottery ticket. Don't get me started on that one again. You missed that conversation earlier, Bill. All right, if there's nothing else for Doug, then we'll move on to the chief.
Okay, well, after that rosy outlook by Doug, here I am asking for money to buy vehicles. In the memo, actually, given our situation, I went out looking for options when this thing first kind of hit. And one of them came to me and I went out and found the other one actually. But in the current budget, we did approve the $95,275 for the purchase of a new patrol vehicle and a new community service officer vehicle with all of the related equipment and installs and everything else included in those. After doing some searching and looking around, I did find two options in order to reduce that, to cut about $9,000 off in order to still purchase the two vehicles. One Ford dealer in the area, which is Riverview Ford in Oswego, has an undelivered 2019 new Ford Utility Interceptor squad car. As it said in the memo, it was ordered. They've had the vehicle for over a year. They've been trying to work with their client. They've finally given up on trying to deliver the vehicle to them and are willing to sell it to us. It would be at a price considerably less than if we were to order a new vehicle due to a significant price increase from Ford with their 2020 model year with their full redesign of that vehicle. So as the memo states, it would save us about $4,600 total. And it would be a $31,275 vehicle purchase price and then a $13,625 for the emergency equipment, new computers, consoles, all the outfit, lettering, marking, and all the associated things that go along with putting it together. Secondly, in regards to the.
Chief, let's take these one at a time.
One at a time, okay.
Let me see if I can get a motion then to approve the purchase of a patrol vehicle in the amount of $44,900.
I'll move it.
Move by trustee Anderson, second.
Oh, second.
Who was that, trustee Wilson?
Yeah.
Okay, second by trustee Wilson. All right, any discussion on that purchase?
Is there any significant change in that new model year versus the existing that we know of any difficulties with or, you know, that have, have we had, well, we haven't had that model year yet because this is a year old model. But do we know if there's no little kinks or anything like that with that model year?
Well, from what I have been told and what I know personally from what I read in the communications that Ford came out with, the 2020 model year was delayed significantly. Those vehicles are actually produced at the Chicago Assembly Plant and the majority of those were all put on trucks and/or trucks. of those were all put on trucks and/or trains and shipped from Chicago back up to several plants in Michigan for repairs and refits and fixes. They, Ford has said that, you know, all those things have been ironed out and all that, and that they're back on track with them. However, it is a first model year of a complete redesign. The vehicle was redesigned, not only, you know, the body of it is different, but the whole chassis, drivetrain, and everything was changed. So it's a significant change first model year, which I'm always a little leery of. And obviously, along with that, with all those changes with the technology upgrades is what they're saying, there was about a $5,000 per unit price increase. It's still cheaper than a Chevy Tahoe or comparable other vehicles out there. So it is still less expensive than the competitor, but still considerably more than what we've gotten used to paying over the last, basically almost 10 years now, that that vehicle has really been out there and available. So that 2019 model year that's left over, I don't know for sure, but as I said, it's probably the last one left in the state. I had a heck of a time even trying to find one when we purchased last fiscal year, a year ago from right now, they were such hot commodities because everybody wanted to get them to avoid the big price increase for the 2020 model year.
Trustee Daniel Boone, you have a question?
I was going to say what we're doing at the district, the Forest Preserve, is avoiding the first year out of any major changes. So I'm in agreement with Nick that, or Chief, that those, you don't want to be the test tube. So.
As a former assistant superintendent in a GM assembly plant, you never want to buy the first year of a new model and don't ever buy a car built on a Monday night because they're all watching Monday Night Football. It's the truth, as the former mayor used to say. Does that satisfy your question there, Bill?
Yeah, it sure does. No, that's what I was concerned with, something like that where we are.
Do we have any 19s in the fleet now, Chief?
We do. The vehicle that we purchased this current fiscal year was a 2019 model year. So we'll actually wind up with two of them, but this one is undelivered. It still has less than 100 miles on it, and they're going to offer us a full warranty on it.
That's great.
All right.
Because it's a, because it, I have one other question. Because it's a year old and it's been sitting on the lot, basically, are we getting any other price consideration?
Other than the fact that it's just so much cheaper than a new one, no, that going by what the sales, actually, the manager of the store has told me, they're actually taking a loss on the vehicle from what they bought it for because they're not a volume police quantity dealer. So they basically paid retail for the, or their wholesale, and then they were going to retail it. From what he's telling me, they're technically going to take a loss on the vehicle, selling it to us at the price that he gave us. So, but other than the fact, we're still getting a brand new car. He did tell me they have taken it out. They drive it around every once in a while to make sure that they keep everything, fluids moving in it and everything. They do have been taking it out and driving it. That's why it's got not quite 100 miles on it yet, but they haven't been doing that.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please, Diane.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filek.
Aye.
Bill Gerberich.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Chief, on to your next one.
All right. The second one is a replacement for our community service officer vehicle. That vehicle is currently a 13-year-old Ford F-150 pickup truck that is definitely showing its age. The, it's going to need a lot of work if we keep it. I'll just say that. But again, in looking at options, comparing what I did budget for, which was a brand-new Ford F-150 through the state bid purchase program, looking at options, I spoke with Dan Schwabkey, and as I said, at Bob Josh Chevrolet, I have dealt with him in the past when he was over at Ron Westfall Chevrolet, when I was previously at Oswego. We used to buy used vehicles for detective cars from him. He always did very well. So I reached back out to him, and he has assured me when he looked at our list of what I would have been ordering, that he could find us a late-model used vehicle. He's estimating in the 20,000 to 30,000 mileage range for probably a two- to three-year-old vehicle for $25,000 out the door. And I told him that's what I would be wanting to look at for a used vehicle. It would be something similar to what Tom Brennan bought last year for the building and zoning department. It would either be an F-150 Chevy half-ton or GMC half-ton, which are, they're 1,500 trucks, extended cab with the bed, a four-wheel-drive vehicle, and basically kind of a basic model, no fancy stuff. And then we would go through, still have to purchase the other items and do the outfit on it. But that versus the state bid price of the brand-new F-150 would save us $4,400 in cost. And I think still give us a very viable vehicle. We don't put as many miles on those, the community service officer pickup truck as we do on the patrol cars. It doesn't get driven that much. I think it'd still last us a good amount of time for our investment.
All right. Motion then to approve the purchase of a CSO vehicle in the amount of $41,375. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of a CSO vehicle in the amount of $41,375?
I'll move it for discussion.
Move by trustee Anderson, second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Filek. Discussion on that purchase.
So Chief, when you're talking about how much work has to be done, how much is that going to cost?
Initial estimations, I'd say about $2,000 to start. We need brakes, and we need all-new brake lines. That's all the metal lines and all of the flexible lines. The flex lines are getting dry and starting to crack, and the metal lines are all rotted. So between that and the brake job that it's going to need for right now, we would estimate it a couple thousand dollars, along with a couple of other components that are showing signs of rust on the bottom. We don't know what else may come. We just did have to do a fuel pump replacement in it. And it's at that age point right now where things are just starting to go. The corrosion on the underneath side of the truck is of a significance concern for what it's doing to those other modules and sensors that are mounted on the bottom. Earlier this past year, we also had to replace a module that's part of the fuel system because it was corroded. And it's just due to rust. The truck sat unfortunately, I think for a long period of time with a lot of salt probably on the bottom of it previous to my getting here. I know they already had to have some work done to replace floor pans in it. So I, I do know there's a concern. We would like to replace it. Understanding the board's concern, you know, from what we heard from Doug, can we continue to push the vehicle along? We can. It's going to cost us a considerable amount of money, along with the fact that included in the price of the new vehicle, we have to replace the computer that's in that truck as we do, as was budgeted as part of the replacement cost of the squad car. The computer in it is so old, it's no longer upgradable. We're literally running already on past due time because it's a Windows 7 platform, and we have to replace that computer. Our Tricom dispatch center won't allow us to continue to use that computer much longer. They've given us a little bit of a grace period knowing about the fiscal year start. But if we keep that vehicle, we are going to have to buy a new computer for it and a whole new computer mount. That again is going to be about $3,500, which is included in that vehicle purchase price for all the equipment and outfit. So that's not budgeted in other area. If the board did decide to not purchase this vehicle, we're still going to have some additional monies that I would need to request to do that. And then frankly, the, the next best thing that I think would be beneficial to do is get rid of that vehicle because of the amount of money and potential future repairs it needs. And we could try to convert the squad car that we're taking out of rotation. Again, still has to replace the computer in it, try to put that in service temporarily, maybe for the next year, as a CSO vehicle, remarket and go that route. But I would need additional cash in order to purchase the new computer and the computer mount because we can't reuse. Unfortunately, the computer mount that's in there is for a laptop that's well out of use and date and is not adaptable to the new computer.
I'm leaning towards, I like that option of repurposing a vehicle and, and purchase the computer that you need, whatever you need inside the vehicle, and that's kind of where I'm leaning.
I have to add, Chief, if you were to, if we were to repurpose a vehicle, understand we have to redo a computer and a computer mount. But then X number of months down the road or a year down the road, we do replace it for something else, we can reuse that computer and the computer mount, correct?
We could reuse the computer. The mount would, is vehicle-specific on these mounts because we use a tablet. So it would be a new computer mount. Generally speaking, those are about $600.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, that's nice.
I'm, I'm leaning towards that.
Okay, so.
Hey, Chief, what about the Trailblazer?
Oh, gosh, no.
Come on. It was free.
Oh, that, we're using that as limited as we can right now.
So it sounds like, let's get some feedback from Matt and Chris here as well, and Sue.
Yeah. I think, I think it's smart to, if we have something that we could make work, that's what we should do.
Well, and I thought the board might think about that. That's why I was looking at that. But, you know, and I don't have it written up, but it would, I would still need additional money that's not budgeted anywhere else in the budget to make those changes. And that would be for the new computer, the computer mount, taking off the police markings and changing it over to community service officer markings and just moving a couple of the other small items in there. I would need about, well, probably a $3,600, $4,300, I'm sorry, $3,600 for the computer and mount, and about $800 to change over markings and a couple of other items. So I, I would still need some cash to do that because I don't have it anywhere else in the budget.
Well, you've already got money in the budget for a new CSO vehicle. You just use that line item, right, Doug?
Fourth of it.
That's in the capital line. I mean, if Doug is okay with it, it is approved. If the board wants to, then I'll try to just limit it to, that would be, you know, that amount of money.
Yeah. Purchase it in the next 10, 10 days.
This is for next fiscal year.
Your CSO vehicle was next fiscal year or this year?
Both these, both these vehicles were fiscal year 2021.
Okay. All right. Matt?
Yeah, I appreciate Chief putting that option out there because it's, like, it'll be perfect.
You broke up a little bit there at the end, but I think we got the gist of it. Bill, did you want to add something?
Just really, how, how many miles does the CSO officers use the vehicle? Well, I mean, things aren't as active, for instance, down at Metro anymore. So it's really kind of more weeds and stuff like that.
Instead, they do a lot of our errand running. They run the, to Circuit Clerk's Office, State's Attorney's Office, Tricom, to the State Police Crime Lab, which that's in Rockford, when we have to take there. So I'm trying to pull up my, my vehicle report. I think we're probably, hold on, let me get it pulled up here. If I can find it. In the last year, we've put about 15,000 miles on that vehicle.
Okay, so.
CSOs use the vehicles more. It's more errand running. They're, they're driving around delivering stuff, picking up things, taking things out to Rockford when we take things to the crime lab, picking things up from the crime lab when we get results back, and we have to get the property back. So that's obviously, and then just driving around town. But again, their vehicle, and I feel better if we're going to repurpose a vehicle, take that vehicle out of patrol fleet, it doesn't have to then be subjected to the high-speed response runs because we don't have the CSOs making high-speed responses to calls. They drive at normal speeds, and then they'll activate their lights when they get there to help with traffic control or whatever else it is. So, you know, I feel better about putting them in that older vehicle, repurposing it down for now, and then we see how the budget goes. And maybe we replace it at the end of the fiscal year, or maybe it gets pushed off to another fiscal year.
Yeah. I was just wondering if, if we sell the other vehicle, the rusty one, is there much money we're going to get out of that anyway? Or is it pretty much a beater?
Unfortunately, there won't be a lot of money to be gotten out of it because of the rust situation. And this, the other thing is, there's a resaler called Vito Enterprises in Sycamore. I'll reach out to them, see if they'd be interested in taking it as it is. If we strip it down, there are going to be holes all over the vehicle, including in the roof, the sides of the body, because of the, the way the lights were put on when it was originally set up. There's going to be multiple holes in the side of the bed and the tailgate, the roof from the light bar, which is normal, the radio antennas, and of course, the rust is just the added bonus, the rust holes in it. And, and again, that lighting that's on there is so old, it's really not even worth anything as a resale. So I can see if they would give us anything. And what he normally does on a trade-in like that is he would give us a credit towards something in the future. So we could use it for other equipment in the future. Or we strip it down, we might get, I would say we'd get a few hundred dollars for it at an auction.
Oh, okay. So it's really kind of pretty much.
By the time we take all the emergency equipment off it, it's going to be full of holes all over the place. And that unfortunately hurts the resale value.
And, and so we're going to take a vehicle, the one we would repurpose, the squad car, how many miles on that one? I mean, if we're going to be adding 15,000 onto that one for, let's just say, a year.
The last mileage, I think I have on that one, it's about 108,500 miles.
How many miles on one of those?
In the past, we've tried to kind of get rid of them around 100,000 miles.
So we might get a year or two.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we'll see how it goes. It's, we're, we're kind of, in our fleet here, we're really at the, the kind of the brink of what are we going to get out of these utility interceptors? I know statistically and historically, for as long as I've done fleet management, what I could push a Crown Vic to without really getting into large sums of money for repairs. We just don't know that for sure right now with these police interceptors because they're all kind of getting up there now where they're being, starting to be retired. And we, you know, we've had a couple of repair issues with this one that are more, you know, we'll see where it goes. I mean, we'll, we'll watch it. If push came to shove, and we had a major repair, come back to the board and say, do you want me to continue to either use out of the capital funds for the vehicle that we didn't replace if we exhaust, or we're going to see a huge hit in the vehicle maintenance line? Or do we reconsider a replacement at that point in time? But I think if we're going to repurpose that vehicle, take it out of a patrol rotation, put it into a community service officer, it's not being subject to as many miles, and it's not being subject to as hard of a use.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it's kind of a toss, you know. It, if, if the, if the transmissions on those cars are pretty good, because that's always a biggie, you know, and if we kept oil in it and clean, we're pretty good as far as that metallurgy. It's the, it's the trans for me.
It hasn't shown any indication of a transmission failure at this point, and all of our squad cars are regularly serviced at 5,000 miles or when they get down to 20% oil life because the cars do have that monitor in it. So whichever one of those comes first, I'm very diligent about that. Sergeant Harris is very diligent about it as the fleet manager here because the regular service, I believe, heads off a lot of things. We identify things early on and repair them before they get to be a major issue. So.
Yeah.
Knowing what the situation, I think that's the best option.
Yeah. Okay. I'm, I'm fine.
Chief, in your list of vehicles in your quarterly report, which squad? Chief, in your list of vehicles in your quarterly report, which squad number are you talking about repurposing to the CSO?
It'd be Squad Number One.
All right, any other questions before I call the vote on this particular item, the $41,375? Okay, roll call, please, Diane?
Ken Anderson.
Nay.
Sue Filick.
Nay.
Bill Graberek.
Nay.
Chris Mondy.
Nay.
Pat Schuberg.
Nay.
Matt Wilson.
Nay.
Motion fails, so how do we handle the spend then to re-outfit the other vehicle? Is that going to come back as a capital? Is that in your, I mean, can we just, you're only talking about, what, 6,000 probably overall, Chief?
Probably in a neighborhood of about $4,500, but it is money, I did not account for that in my regular operating budget, so.
So Doug, do we do a transfer, we'll look to you for your expertise.
We'll transfer it from the capital fund to the operating fund. And then, and then we won't, we won't capitalize that asset. Normally, when you purchase a capital asset, then you capitalize it and show it on the property list. We won't do that in this case.
Okay, now is that a board approval, or is that a department head approval thing there?
Yeah, would, would that not include the computer, though? Would the Doug, would the computer, the new computer, be a capital item?
No, the computer on its own is, does, does not meet the capitalization threshold.
Okay.
All right, leave that to you Doug, to figure out how to handle the budget, if it has to come back to the board, you'll bring it back, but I guess Chief, you have the direction.
Okay, all right, I appreciate the one new vehicle anyway, I know we're in tough times right now, so.
The first COVID-19 hit in the budget.
I'm sure a few more to come.
I'm sure, all right, and you've got your first quarter report.
First quarterly report, just a couple of items in there, and there's a, a big change in the, the building check line under operations. We had a huge spike last year due to changes that were taken very much to heart by some officers that reported every single check that they did. Things have kind of settled back down here now, they're kind of more or less calling out, if they're going to be out at a business plaza or whatever, they'll just call out one instead of calling out one for every individual door that they rattled, or pulled on. So, you'll see the numbers are back down to kind of where we were used to seeing them before. Our other calls for service were down, and I would say a lot of that is in regards to the probably the last three weeks or so of March, when we started kind of reeling back in when this whole COVID thing hit, and we started changing some of our practices and so forth, and we started seeing a lesser amount of calls coming in from the public for general, kind of non-emergency, non-criminal calls, we really reduced, we stopped doing fingerprints, and we stopped doing some of those other things that would account for some of those other calls in there. Otherwise, you see, most of the other numbers are pretty much about the same as what we were last year. Our big investigation hit, obviously, everybody knows, our attempted murder. So, that is in there as the investigative spotlight, the officers did a really good job on that. Again, we really want to put a hand out to Detective Shepherd, who really worked very diligently on that case, put a lot of really great evidence together, and then coordinated with the Major Crimes Task Force, and we got a lot of extra help to, to target a couple of locations simultaneously and do some stuff with a very successful outcome. Training hours, we are significantly up in training hours, but again, if you look at those couple of individual line item updates in there, Officer Tarek being in the basic police academy, accounts for his hours completely, for the most part, throughout that quarter. So, there's a lot of training hours, but they are for him being there full-time. Kind of, a little bit of a side note from that, we're still working him through, his training, through the field training. He has completed as of last week, all the remaining book-level training through the academy, and we're just waiting for a final decision on how they're going to get him back in to do the last few of the hands-on qualifications and the state certification tests. So, that's still kind of up in the air as of the last email I got over the weekend. And otherwise, unless anybody has any other questions for anything else in the report, that'd be it.
Any questions for the Chief? All right, thanks Chief. Do you have something, Bill?
No, no, I said no, no.
All right, moving on then to, oh, I just wanted to mention, Chief, good, you know, Shepherd stopped by my house today, too, trying to get down this porch pirating going on down here in Perry Creek, over here in the hood, apparently. Little did we know, Matt, that we moved into the bad part of town. But he did come by looking for ring videos today, he's on top of it.
And we did get a ring video submitted, unfortunately, you know, in all the good COVID-19 procedures, the person is wearing a mask and a hoodie, and going to be pretty tough to make a description on it, but we, we do have at least a basic physical description, and we're looking to see if we get anything else from anybody. I think that's the guy right there. I think that's it, that's the look.
Well, I, I think your, your friend in Camden will be getting his position back as safest city in Illinois next year. I don't think we're going to maintain that distinction.
And if the board didn't hear, we, we did have a burglary at the Dunkin' Donuts, of all places, early Saturday morning, which was smashed through the front window and grabbed some stuff. There's a couple of other communities around the area that have had similar occurrences at Dunkin' Donuts, so Detective Shepherd made some reach-outs today to try to start putting something together, see if we can jump on board with some of these other communities, and maybe get a pattern and develop a suspect. But, yeah, of all places, you know, you know, police really don't like to see the Dunkin' Donuts get burglarized.
Yeah, that's like sacred ground.
I know, that's a hard one to take, boy.
Moving on, Mr. Van Bogert, are you out there? Phil? Phil, Phil? Oh, he's on mute, let's see if we can take him off mute. John, can, oh, there we go, Phil, can you, can you speak now, maybe we can hear you?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Oh, okay.
All right, you want to buy a couple trucks, too, sure you've seen how this is going.
Your business is, if you look on the Village Board meeting sheet here, I need to be moved up just above maybe building and zoning. That should be a good start. After all the doom, I almost don't even want to say anything. Well, anyway. Discuss and approve a purchase of a 2020 service truck from Runyon Equipment for $75,592. The, the board wanted me to go out and look, or get a state bid for this, and the state has not gotten their paperwork to Marl Brothers yet for, to get a state bid. You still there?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, I had gotten a state bid back, just a, not a state bid, but I, I did get another bid, and it was for, it's actually through SPC, it's a suburban purchase cooperative, and they told me that they're generally about the same as the state is, they're just easier to deal with. Oh, gosh. Yeah. I've got an iPhone that went for a little drink into a storm sword, it doesn't want to shut off, so that was just Siri. But anyway, what we've got is that, that's a pretty darn good price that I've got on that truck. I did, like I think, get another price, and that was from Madden, Bill Madden, that was from the suburban purchasing cooperative that a lot of the municipalities use, and they were, they were within like, I think it was $400 of where I'm at. They were a little bit cheaper, but I would have to order it, and it would be, they, they told me it would be 14 to 16 weeks out.
Well, this out of this year's budget, well, let's get the motion first, so I need a motion then to approve the purchase of a 2020 service truck from Runyon Equipment in the amount of $75,592. Moved by Trustee Graberek, second by Trustee Anderson, AKA Crockett. Discussion on this truck, I know you, we had quite a bit of discussion in previous meetings on this truck, and Phil's done some research and such, but any, any other discussion questions? My question was, is this out of this year's budget or next year?
Out of this year's, it was budgeted for. It was a budgeted for this year.
Okay.
So, it would be 2019, 2020, so it'd be this year's budget.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, you know, have you reached back to this, these people to see, you know, obviously, all kinds of people are deciding to not spend money and buy things, could they do a little bit better price?
I'm not saying they wouldn't, but I did ask them about that, actually, I did talk to them last week, and see if he could lower it anymore, and that was pretty much the bottom, he told me.
Okay.
And I, I've gotten like over, you know, since last fall, I've gotten, I think, four prices, and they've all been within probably a thousand dollars with this municipal pricing.
Is this an addition, can you read?
What's that, can you hear me okay?
I was just, yeah, I was just going to ask Phil, is this an additional truck or a replacement? What happens if you were to delay this because of the financial situation we're in?
What will happen? I mean, well, nothing's going to, nothing, there won't be anything earth-shattering if we don't get it this, this fiscal year, other than it was budgeted, and as the public works, I was working towards getting, you know, getting the village kind of set up, do obviously more of their own work, in which we are doing a lot more of the work. Is it, could we push it off, you know, I think there comes down to, you can push anything off, if the village so chooses to.
Well, what, what does this piece of equipment allow us to do in-house that we can't do right now?
Right.
Well, it, what, basically what it does is it makes us like, it'll help us be a little more organized, so far as when we go out to a job, we don't have to, it seems like you end up bringing three different trucks with three different things on it, or, or what I'm saying is that this truck would allow us to, when we go to a water main job, we would have a compressor, we would have, you know, we'd have, we would have the tools, we'd have a crane on it eventually, we'd have all the things that we need to take care of, whether it's water main, sewer main, whatever. For the most part, we'd have everything we should need on that truck, I mean, is, you know, that also, you know, you got to figure, we got to do, we would have to buy some, you know, some more tools for it. Keep in mind that when, let's say, you know, let's say that Jerry Snow and company comes out and does the water main, their service truck, I get charged, I mean, 150 bucks an hour, for their service truck to be on the job. So, it would, it definitely would help us if, if our goal is to grow in this village and do more of the work ourselves, it's definitely it aids this public works. Is it the end-all to get it this year? No, but like anything, you just postpone it.
Well, I, I just want to put out to the board that I think we've been traveling down this path for a while, you know, we've always talked about setting ourselves up to be a village of 10,000, bringing more things in-house, and trying to get rid of some of these contractors whose, whose charges tend to be pretty high, you know, we've always been of the opinion that the more work we can, we can do in-house, the better. And if this gets us down that, that road, I would encourage a yes vote.
Yeah, but we also asked a month, two months ago to get a prices for per-acre mowing that never was done, so when are you going to have the guys and the manpower to do it, when you're buying all these extra tools, they're just going to sit there?
Okay, that's a question for Phil, where are we at on the per-acre mowing quote?
The, the mowing is going out, it's, like I had told Chris before, even once I know how many acres we, exactly how many acres we've got, that won't go out until next year, so far as to have, get the mowing out for that. Right now, we're rebidding the SSA One and Metro. And so, so far as going out for bid, that would be for next year.
So, we budgeted this year to do it in-house?
Yes.
Phil, can I ask a question? If your comment just a little bit ago, talking about needing three trucks to do one job, that this new truck could possibly do, if that were the case, is there a vehicle that the village could unload?
As we're growing, yeah, I mean, you could probably get rid of one of the trucks. I would, you know, as we are growing, you know, I wouldn't say we start unloading our fleet, but if we had to get rid of a truck, I'm sure we could get rid of a truck.
I mean, to, just to give us some money back, you know, like, not that it's a trade-in, but, you know, just thinking like that? To justify the cost of it?
Keep, keep in mind, vehicles we've got, some of the vehicles we have, we've got a, I think it's like an '06 Ford 350, so far as it's got some cool boxes on the back, which, it serves its purpose for, you know, just running around. And we've got some, we've got a couple of 150 Fords that are like, I think, '04s. So, our fleet isn't exactly real new, I know, I think when John was there, he bought, it might be like an old, a '16 F-250, and then we do have a, you know, a newer dump truck, but most of our vehicles are mid-2000, or I say 2005-ish.
But that F-2, that F-250 is a service body, too, isn't it?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's like a light-duty service body.
What do you think, Chris, you could do the same thing?
I'd think so. I'd rather say replace one of those older dump trucks that are in the fleet than getting another service body one.
I don't, I don't necessarily agree, but that's, I guess that's up to the board.
Well, I mean, we're talking, we're in this year's budget now, not, not future budget, so we got to focus on, on this year's budget. I don't disagree with you, Chris, I think some of those dump trucks, I think we got one that's, just had some pretty big service work this week because of blown hydraulic lines, but this one was for this year's budget, which ends in two weeks. So, the board has to decide if we move forward, or we don't spend the money and put it towards next year, and we look at other, we have, we asked Phil to look at other options. Or other vehicles, or other, you know, but like I said, our path has always been bring it in-house and do what we need to do to do that. We bought many pieces of equipment that way in the last couple of years. Bill?
As far as putting a, some sort of crane on it, what sort of cost is that down the road?
Fairly expensive cost, if you were to put a crane and compressor on it, you're probably up around 25,000. But you would actually have one, one, now, keep in mind, that truck should last, especially with the village, at least 15 years. 10 to 15, pretty easy, most of our vehicles are either 15 years old or older, so.
Could you put that crane on the, on one of the other service trucks?
No, no. No, it wouldn't be nearly, it's not nearly heavy enough, I mean, my thought is, get, get at least one vehicle equipped, and if that's the route we want to go, if that's not the route the, the board wants to go, I mean, it's, that's, you know, it's, it's kind of in their hands, we can stay doing kind of what we're doing.
Yeah, you know, if we. Yeah. Uh, you, you know, if we, again, if, we'd end up with a hundred thousand dollar truck if we get a crane on it that we could actually eliminate the hundred and fifty bucks an hour every time we, you know, have, uh, snow or somebody come out. And I, I just think of the old parts of town where, you know, tends to have a sewer line or a water line break more often than, you know, the newer parts. You know, would, if, if we start to look at that kind of economics, you know, i- is it worth it to go ahead on this one? And have a new, and you think the aluminum is a better or a body than, than?
I, I think it's a better route to go, uh, only because of the rust problem, the rust issues with them.
Yeah.
I mean, I, like I say, I, I've had service trucks through the years and, uh, I've always had the steel ones and I've had them undercoated and, and, uh, you know, even had the box, the interior of the box is done and, uh, they, they would last about, about eight years before it really started rusting bad.
Yeah. Yeah, in, in my prior life, I worked for a chemical company and actually went with salesmen to show them how to rust proof cars, you know? Who was a competitor to Rusty Jones and all that, but yeah, if done right, th- they can last substantial time. Most times they're not done correctly, so.
I mean, even, even when I was in business, even if we bought a new semi or a six wheeler, we used to have Z-Bart doing them. And it did make them last a little longer. It was, to me, it was the money.
Yeah, but even Z-Bart, uh, I, th- they really don't spend the extra time in making sure every little crevice is filled. But anyway, beside the point, I'm, I'm not about to, you know, offer my rust proofing services anyway, cause I'm a little old and a little, uh, rusty and, uh,
Not crawling under any vehicles in the near future, Bill?
Yeah.
Somebody has an office assistant there.
Yeah, he just came by for a visit. So I guess I don't have a problem with, with, I, I certainly agree with our, what we've been doing as a village with bringing more things in-house. Um, in the long run, that does to, put us in a position of, of greater strength and, um, being able to be more flexible. And it does help with the, i- instead of having the cost, increased costs of some of our vendors. I just, it's something that, and I know that this is budgeted in this year's budget, not next year's. Um, I look at seventy-five thousand at this particular point in time when some of our revenues are gonna be taking such a hit. And that's what goes in my mind of whether or not it's the best time to do this.
No, I, hey, I, I see both sides. I see both sides of it. It is kinda unpredictable times. And that's why.
The board decision.
Plus fees. You got.
So if there's a-
The, one of the things is that, you know, just because it's budgeted this year, that money doesn't go away. It's still going to be there in our cash reserves. It's just not going to get spent. And so it gets carried over to the bottom line. You know, I, I think taking six months to, to assess our, our revenues, where are we gonna be? You know, it is incredibly reasonable to, to do that and revisit it later this year. Um, you know, it is a big purchase. It's not something that Public Works needs right now, this week. They do need it in the future. Because if we are gonna take this stuff in-house, they are gonna have to have the tools. They're gonna have to, you know, have what they need to do their job. And this is one of the tools to do that. Um, but we need that tool today? No, probably not. Can we wait? Certainly. And let's see where we're at in six months.
So I know, I know we have, it says streets capital funds in the amount. Can this be shared with the other, um, enterprise funds so that it's not a big hit to the street fund? Since it's gonna be used for more than just one?
Yeah, it could, it's just, should some of it come out of capital for sewer and water?
Right, and that's, that's a revenue that's coming in and it won't be affected by what's going on, cause people are still flushing their toilets. Just a thought.
That'd be a Doug question.
Cause even, it's not even gonna be really used for streets. It's all gonna be used for sewer and water, isn't it?
I think you're gonna find you're gonna be using it for both.
Typically on something that's shared between multiple departments, we, we expense it through multiple departments. We, we do that on a pretty regular basis. Every two weeks on the bills list and there's no reason that the, the purchase of a vehicle couldn't or shouldn't be done the same way because part of it, part of it is gonna be used for water and sewer and, and rightfully so. Water and sewer should pay part of the expense for that.
Right.
What do you think, Phil? Is that a fifty-fifty or seventy-five, twenty-five?
Thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three.
You know, I think, you know, it's a thirty, yeah, I think it, I, I divided it out three ways personally.
Well, water-
And then it's not as big of a deal on our revenues.
Mm-hmm. That's true.
All right, so is the board more amiable to purchasing this truck with a sixty-six percent coming out of water sewer capital and thirty-three percent coming out of general fund as it's budgeted?
Well, someone's gotta amend their motion.
Well, I know, but I'm just, I wanna get a feeling for it before we-
Yeah, I, I want to-
Do we have both capital dollars?
Yes, we're, we're, Doug, you wanna comment on the capital dollars and, and water sewer?
I, I don't have the water sewer capital budget in front of me, but, uh, then we're-
Pretty flush.
Pretty comfortable on the capital side in water and sewer.
Yes.
Then I could be more amiable to this.
Me too.
All right, so who made the original motion? That was-
Phil.
Who?
Bill Graberek and Ken Anderson, first and second.
All right, Bill, would you be willing to amend your motion to approve this purchase split between water sewer and general fund?
Yeah, I, I, I consequently amended, uh, to, uh, have the, uh, the funding for this capital item to be split, three ways, water sewer and, uh, streets for the works.
Ken, would you amend your second?
I do.
Bill, all right. Any other discussion then?
No, I think this is the way to go. Uh, cause we, at, at least we're upgrading and, but we don't have this huge hit and we'll be able to, i- if Doug feels we're okay with sewer and water in our capital, this is, this is the way to still advance. And I kind of agree with Jeff with, you know, if we're ever gonna grow and start taking stuff in-house, we've gotta start somewhere. And this is one of the biggies that would provide at least the, the, you know, the platform to add some necessary equipment on. For instance, a crane.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote please, Diane?
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Filic.
Hi.
Bill Graberek.
Hi.
Chris Mondi.
Nay.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, uh, next on Phil's agenda is the Scrivener's error.
Yeah, please, yeah, go ahead.
Diane, who's got that one?
Oh, I can. I can do it for you. Um, it's basically does discuss and approve, uh, amending ordinance, well, twenty twenty dash eight, amending chapter ten sixty-two sewer rates and rates due to Trevor's error. And basically it was just a a mathematical, we added, I think, whatever it was, two point one percent two, I had it in here, hang on.
Out on page six.
Yeah, but for debt service charge and that just didn't add any, uh, you know, additional percentage added to it. So that was what the mistake was. It was, it should've stayed a dollar forty-one and it got bumped to a dollar forty-four.
All right, do I have a motion then to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash zero eight, amending chapter ten sixty-two of the sewer rates and charges due to a Scrivener's error?
I'll move it.
Uh, moved by trustee Filic, second by trustee Schuberg. Any discussion on the Scrivener's error? Who the heck is a Scrivener? That's my question.
It's, yeah, well, it's one who scrubs, yeah.
Say, I knew Bill would have the answer. All right, roll call vote please, Diane?
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondi.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. We just lowered everybody's water bill. All right, Phil, quarterly report.
All right, Chris, I'll keep it short for you. Um, so far as for, um, quarterly report for the first quarter, uh, we had a hundred and fif- or a hundred and fifty-two work orders last year at this time. This year we have two hundred and nineteen. Basically, the additional work orders this year came from our water meters, uh, program, which we're replacing the old water meters in town. That's, so that's where the majority of the difference in, uh, so far as the, uh, work orders, the, why we're, we got a few more this year. Uh, wastewater treatment plant, everything is going pretty well there. Uh, we're, we're treating, uh, between four and five million gallons diff- uh, difference. Uh, than the, you know, basically between four and five million gallons at the, in the same quarters ten years ago. So it's not off by too much. Um, so it's nothing a whole lot to talk about there. Uh, water, uh, samples, uh, all the water samples in this quarter came back satisfactory. And, uh, let me see, we had, uh, we had about, uh, let me see, about four hundred and fifty-seven thousand gallons less this January than in two thousand and ten. And we had about two hundred and thirty-four thousand ga- uh, gallons of water pumped less than in February of two thousand and ten. And in March, we had about a hundred and thirty-two thousand difference. So there isn't a great deal of difference in the water pumpage even, uh, from ten years ago, which is good. At least it's less. So we're, we're, we're heading in the right direction. Um, so that's, that's about all I have for the quarter.
Any questions for Phil? Phil, where are we at with the, uh, and maybe Julie can jump in on our road, um, mapping, our plan? Are we, are we close to a plan? Is Doug budgeting for something yet? Do we, uh, do we know where we're going?
So, so far as, what were you, were you talking about just for a five-year plan?
Yeah, where, where are the worst roads? What section of town are we going at first? Are we, are we done with all the surveying? Do we know where the worst sewers and water are? I know we, we had some things in progress and I don't know if everything's finished up yet.
No, a lot of the sewer and water stuff, let's say the northwest, uh, that is, uh, a budgeted for this year and that is mostly, uh, between TVing and, and, uh, smoke testing, um, and some jetting over there. That's what's been budgeted. So that we can figure out what direction really we should be going on the sewer and waters.
I thought that was all part of the original plan with the, uh, was all budgeted at once.
So far as the whole village, are you talking about the streets? We're working on a five and-
Three-phase plan that we put into effect, uh, a year ago or so.
Well, this would be the second of the phase. Is, would be the jetting, you know, jetting whatever we have to in order to be on the camera and, uh, the smoke test. That's actually the second, or the, or the second phase of-
That wasn't budgeted with the whole original program?
Let's, I've got it budgeted for this year.
Okay, I, am I just not remembering this right? Or wasn't this all one program we budgeted to spend at one time?
No, it's over a three-year process.
Okay, I just thought we put all the money away at once, but I could be wrong. All right, any other questions for, uh, Phil?
Uh, I, I was just wondering, Phil, uh, in February, we had lift station, uh, Metro Lift Station sewage was hauled uh, to the plant and treated. Is that like a septic system over there or something that?
No, what, they're, they've got like their own little lift station at Metro, which pumps it to, actually it runs it back north across the tracks and dumps it into one of our sewer lines. And they were having trouble with their lift station. So they were, basically what they had to do is they had to pump, um, pump out of their, they had a, like a back truck there pumping out of their cars, I guess. And going right to the treatment plant or just outside the treatment plant and dumping there until they could get their lift station fixed.
Okay, okay, but that's at Metro's cost or what? I mean, how, how does that work?
That was Metro's cost.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that, that, that's what I was curious of. I had a little note that, you know, sounded like they have their own little septic system that wasn't functioning well or something that, uh-
And, and that's basically, it's, it's like a really, uh, it's like a miniature lift station. You could say it's not very big. I think most of it, the, the, the first five feet of it, I think is made out of plast- it's like a plastic pan.
It's, it's not a septic field. We end up treating their waste.
Yeah, it's not a septic. It's, it's all sewer. It runs, uh, runs from basically the Metro, not the Metro station, but the, where the train cars are. It runs to the west and then it crosses onto the tracks and dumps into one of our sanitary sewers.
Yeah. One other question, do, do they have a, a, a municipal water hookup over in their little house, you know, where they've got the lockers and all of that? Is that, is that where the showers and the toilets and everything are or?
Yes.
Yeah, I would assume so. I would assume so. I know that we've got water at the, the, the little train station, you know, in the, in the wash, you know, in the wash sink. So I'm sure they do.
Yeah, okay. I, I, no, I was just curious and I don't remember when, you know, that was being put together. If, yeah, so they have a, they have a, an accountant with us as for their use of their water and, uh, our water and sewer.
Oh, I'd say so.
Yeah, okay. No, that was it.
A minute, sorry about that. I was muted. Anything else for Phil? All right then, build the bills list.
Uh, Mayor, I, and, uh, honorable board members, I've reviewed the bills list for this date and found everything to be in order. I should mention, uh, that we have distributed a number of the impact fees, uh, totaling not just a hair under sixty thousand dollars to the library and to the fire and, and to the school. Uh, and I also note that our electricity to keep this whole operation in line is, you know, bouncing around pretty close to fifteen grand a month now for everything. And that includes lift stations and all of that. Anyway, uh, aside from, from, uh, those comments, I would, uh, move to approve said bills list in the amount of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Motion by trustee Graberek. You have a second by trustee Schuberg. Any discussion on the bills list? Roll call vote please.
Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondi.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, any other business to come before the board before we go into executive session? There being no other business, I'm just gonna make this announcement. I'm gonna take us into executive session. Uh, and then we will not come back into this Zoom to finish. We, we will just, uh, come out of executive session in the other Zoom. There are no announcements expected out of- There are no announcements expected out of tonight's executive session. So we are just gonna adjourn from the other Zoom that the board members have. Uh, so thank you to the public who attended this evening. Um, and we'll, we'll keep this going if we need to do it one more time. With any luck, maybe we'll be back in business and meeting at Village Hall for our next meeting. We'll see what happens. So, uh, that being said, I need a motion to go into executive session under 5 ILCS 120 slash 2, to collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Graberek, second by trustee Schuberg, all in favor, uh, we need a roll call vote please, Diane?
Yes. Ken Anderson.
Aye.
Sue Philek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondi.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, we will meet you all on the other Zoom, right, John?
Yes, does everybody have the link?
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to it now because that's the one I couldn't get in because the meeting wasn't in progress, so. Yeah, just walk slowly to the back, okay?
Okay.
Stay there, Bill.
Okay, bye-bye.